Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Amy Decore, Superintendent.
Hallie Babcock, School Board.
Tom Solon, School Board.
Beth Williams, School Board.
Tim Gerson, I'm Principal at Hollis Brookline Middle School.
Rick Bott, I'm Principal at Hollis Brookline High School.
Melanie LaBake, School Board.
I'm Annie Hazelton, and I'm a student representative.
Welcome, Annie.
Thank you.
Glad to have you with us. I need to appoint the process observer. Is there anyone who'd like to volunteer?
I don't know.
Cindy? Cindy? Yes, you're good? Okay, thank you again. Cindy, stand up. Do we have any agenda adjustments this evening?
I don't.
Does anyone else? Great. We need to approve some minutes, so let's go right to that. The first set of minutes that we're taking a look at are the September 18th, 2019 Cooperative School Board Minutes. I need a motion to accept as amended. The amendment is on page five, line 34, correct the spelling of "rather." So I need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. Krista, you need...
To abstain.
You need to abstain, okay. So, all in favor? Any discussion? Okay, that is five. Right, one, two, three, four, is there six of us here tonight? Told you, I'm having a hard time keeping track of the meeting. Five oh one. The next set of minutes that we need to approve are the non-public minutes from September 18th. There's no amendments, as far as I could see. Would someone like to make a motion to accept?
Move to approve.
Tom. Non-public minutes from September 18th.
Thank you. And, second?
I go, I'll check.
You, second? You'll second?
Yeah, I was just approving.
Oh, you wrote them, that's right, okay. Again, Krista has to abstain. Is there any discussion? Any other amendments? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, so we are at five oh one again. And then finally, we have non-public minutes from August 21st, which we hadn't really seen last time, but we now have them. So I need a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
By Tom Solon, and seconded by Krista. And, discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I can't, I can't vote, actually. I have to abstain, I was not here. So it's five oh one again. Great, thank you. Okay, moving right along. We have nominations, resignations, retirements, and course moments.
I just have a, what I call an update correspondence for you. Rick and I are both working on a situation. We found out today that the Division Two and Division Four Golf Tournament, Team Tournament Championship, has been canceled because of tomorrow's weather. The frustration, and what we'll be calling tomorrow about, is that they don't intend to make that up. So we have a number of individuals, and our team is very talented. We're the number one seed. So we will be calling the NHIAA to voice our displeasure. The championships for individuals is Sunday. As a result of our tournament getting canceled tomorrow, they're limiting each Division Two and Division Four team to only two golfers. Which, again, presents a problem, because if you know anything about golf, you have your good days and bad days. So we're trying to determine, you know, how we would select those individuals, and it's the balancing act between golf scores, and kids who have been on the team for many years, and a variety of those things. So, I just want to let the board know, because you may get some calls. I would be upset if my son was on the team. I'm upset as their superintendent. And Rick, as our representative, will be calling, and so will I. You know, my suggestion is going to be to not play the individual championship on Sunday, but have the Division Two and Division Four championship on Sunday. And I'm sure in the spring, we could gather all those golfers back up and have an individual championship. I'm sure some people won't like that, but I just, you know, one of the things we have to do as the adults is advocate when something isn't right for our kids. So I wanted to let the board know that we are not happy. We ultimately will accept the decision, but we'll do our best to represent the boys, in this case, from Hollis and Brookline.
Do you have a pick?
No, Superintendent Corey said it all. In the number one seed position, I think we're tied for number one. There's two teams that are, you know, not getting an opportunity to play for somebody they should be able to play for.
Are you coordinating, you're lobbying with other people who might be vested?
I have got the texts going, in terms of other superintendents who are students, because it just came out in the last hour and a half. Ryan was kind enough to call me. So, it's going to affect a lot of kids, because Division Two is a very large division. It's a large number of kids that will be impacted.
Go get them.
Wow, so appreciate you keeping us in the loop, because parents will be upset as well, and it's important for the public to know that this is not a Hollis Brookline decision. It's a NHIAA move. Right, NHIAA, is that right?
Correct.
Yep.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
No other nominations, resignations?
No.
Great, so now we're ready for public input. Seeing none, we'll move on. At this point, we'll move to the principals' report, and I guess we will let you gentlemen decide who would like to go first.
All right.
Rock, paper, scissors?
I would like to highlight, in my board report, the hiring of Miss Wendy Summer, as our new computer education teacher for the 1920 school year. She came in right at the end of September, and has done a phenomenal job with our grade seven students in computer ed curriculum, particularly working coding with some entry level scratch, and it's actually pretty exciting, I was in there the other day. So, I'd like to highlight that hiring, as well as, we have some upcoming events, specifically the PSATs eight-nine, offered to our eighth grade students, and that date is November fourth. And, one last highlight, is we have HBMS United Week. It's our kindness week, and the highlight there is going to be some social-emotional learning, and the focus being on working with students in kind of an anti-bullying theme. We've got some pretty exciting activities that we have our school counseling and our United Club organizing. So, there's some community meetings and some set-up lunches scheduled, and we're gonna have some fun events planned for the kids that week.
Great.
Any questions?
Are the PSAT eight-nine opt-in, opt-out mandatory? How are they being administered?
They'll be an opt option.
So what are you, what? Oh, Melanie, I'm sorry. Yeah, no problem, thank you, Mr. Gerson. As far as the anti-bullying program, what is that? Is there a name of that program?
So our UKA, our United For All Club, which is run by three staff members, is a club that works throughout the year. This was something that they came to me and proposed as an idea. We have a meeting, actually tomorrow, nail down the final details of it. The idea is we're going to do some work in the students' rock, within the rock curriculum. So, small groups, working individually with the trusted adult that they have as their rock teacher. And basically, working with the kids and teaching them about, you know, the impact that we have on each other, and understanding how everyone has their own needs, and helping students understand a little bit more beyond just their own individual perspective, and working with other students of all walks. So, when I say anti-bullying, I think it's, you know, that's part of what's encompassed in kind of an overall, working with students, and helping them navigate some of the social interactions that they go through in middle school.
And is it a structured program called, does it have a name of the program?
Not necessarily. We have, we do have individuals on staff who have taken part in a variety of different professional development activities around this. We do have a district-wide initiative for social-emotional learning, and it aligns with the self-management and self-awareness vision that the district is using as a guide. So, it's something that, I think it's probably the best of what's out there, as far as working with students.
Thank you. Just quickly, are we gonna, is, can we talk about class size? Do you want to do that separately, or do you want to do that as part of your principals' report now?
Well, either way, I was going to do a highlight, and we can, because we go back and forth.
How about you highlight the high school, and then we'll go back to class size?
Yeah. So the one thing I wanted to highlight in my report, and again, happy to take any questions on anything else that's on there. I know we'll do class size, is the school profile, which you should all have a copy of. We're very proud of the results, as expressed on there. And once again, I think I can say with pretty high confidence that, well, I know they're not the best SAT scores, but they're probably like two or three in the state, so they continue to, we continue to perform at the highest possible level, year after year. And it really is a K through 12 document, we just happen to be at the end of the pipeline, so it's just another, kind of a concrete reminder of the good work that all of us do together.
So before we move on to class sizes, I was wondering, now would be a great time to hear out from student council, or I don't know if, is it Annie?
Annie.
I'm gonna write it down. If Annie's prepared to do that, or Mary, or...
We don't have anything, but I did talk to a few students, because I knew that class size would be discussed tonight, just about that, but I can do that after.
I don't know the best order, so...
But yeah, they can do that thing, then I can, we can talk about it.
We'll just all work it out as we go in here. Okay, so, first of all, thank you both for the comprehensive reports, and highlighting the positives, but also addressing in both the reports the things that are going on that are issues that you're dealing with, like the vaping, or, you know, whatever.
Absolutely.
So appreciate that. Are there any other comments for, questions? So, class size, take it away, boys. Class size.
I'll go first. So, one of the things I wanted to highlight on the class size report in the board packet is some of these sections, specifically the ones under term, that are Q1, 2, 3, or 4, are somewhat redundant, in the sense that it is one cohort of students that will be represented four times throughout that report. So, as an example, I know there are some smaller numbers that repeat. I believe it's period seven, has a small section of eighth graders that rotate through the specialists, as well as, there is a large number for, I believe it was period five, four, or five, at 27, that rotated through the specialist. That's not four different cla, it's one cohort of students that appears four times. So, some of those numbers are redundant in the specialist areas.
So, when you're, when we're looking at this report, and we're seeing the number, so we have art, you know, one, that's the period that it's being offered, one to...
Yeah, under expression. Yep.
And then KM through BF, what does that mean?
That is night Monday through blue Friday.
Thank you, just...
Everybody's got that.
It's a secret code.
It's the middle school, right? I got you.
Yes. For the classes that meet every other day, you have to identify the week to keep the minutes balanced. As an example, PE and music, they rotate in one period, so one week is a blue week, make sure that they get the long block, and then the next week, the opposite class gets the long block, so...
And so, as soon as you have period seven, an eighth grader has period seven, that's their, like, I guess we call it their specialist block, where they're going to have, like, tech ed first marking period, and health second marking period, and art, or no, yeah, art, whatever. We track that, that's where we're going to see, like, the 27 kids in that same period for four.
That's correct, yes.
Marking periods.
Yes, that's correct, yep.
Are there any comments or questions from the board regarding middle school class size?
Just, so I understand the repeating perp, but just, if, do I understand it right, that, you know, we have that one or two classes that have the 27 or 28, but then you have some classes that only have eight? Is that for different, so I see, like, in the seventh, you had said the lower, so was, that sounds like, I don't know how to ask this question, but, you know, basically, that's a really big difference, to be in a class that has eight students, versus a class that has 28. I was just curious how that's going. It's a different experience to be in a class when you have a one to eight, or a one to 28. So how's it, yeah, how did that come about? Did we do, and I know with all the changes to the schedule, I would assume that's playing a part in it, because we would, of course, in a perfect world, have pretty average, you know, class sizes, but that's a pretty big swing. So I was just curious how we got to that, and how it's going. That was a lot of questions in one question, I'm sorry, but just how, how do we get there?
I think it's one big question.
Yeah, and how's it going? Yeah.
Yes, so there are several contributing factors. One being, the schedule being new, and then also newly adopted, so when it went into Power School at a later date than it normally would have, there were several challenges and hurdles to get through. And, we worked through a lot during the summer. There were other constraints that were put onto, onto the schedule with, as an example, without having Skills 1, 7, or 8, that forced certain sections to create additional challenges to balance. So, if there were not those options in all the periods, it forced skills into specific periods, and then there was some results, ripple effects from that. That was, I think those are probably the two biggest contributing factors, the schedule being addressed later on, I believe it was approved in the June meeting, and then moving forward with that throughout the summer, and identifying those issues that would have probably been something tackled earlier in the springtime, and ironed out. And then the constraints that the, that were put on, with only having specific periods that you could offer specific classes, put some additional constraints on, and challenges, and then trying to balance those numbers.
So in theory, next year, it might not be quite so, or is that too early to say? I just, it seems like a very big difference, you know, just as a parent, if my child's one to eight versus one to 28, that's a very big difference, and we've experienced that in all the different places we live, so just curious.
So can I just add to this?
Absolutely.
Part of it also, if you look at some of the eights of the grade eight cohort, which is a significantly smaller group of students.
It is, yeah.
So overall, those class sizes are much smaller.
Yeah.
Another contributing factor is courses selected. So, selecting a reading course versus a language, that also kind of tweaks what the available sections are. And finally, you know, as we have done historically, if you are in, let's say, grade seven, Algebra I, that new class that we've created, that, we committed one period to that, so that class has 28 students. And that was selected, and the same is true for algebra in eighth grade. Those are historically a larger section with that level of students, so that the smaller cohorts can be in the grade eight, grade appropriate math class, to provide a little bit more individual support and instruction to those students. So there are some decisions that we just have made historically, when making decisions.
Sure, yeah, and I did, I did figure that was part of it, just the class sizes are, you know, that happens to be quite different this time, but just curious, and, but it's going okay, one to 28, and one to eight, that's going pretty well.
So, I do see that the algebra class in grade seven is 28 students, so it's maxed out, and, just to refresh my memory, either Tim or Gina, will those students be moving into geometry next year?
Correct.
So, and are we prepared for the potential? Is it possible with V-Lax, or with, that we would end up with more than 28 kids taking geometry next year?
There's always a possibility, as, you know, kids move into the district, and based on what they come in with, right? And then some, some families choose to do a V-Lax option independently, or do other math options, that would put them at a place where they're ready for a different course, despite the fact that we didn't necessarily plan for that.
Right.
So you, you just never know what you're going to get, 100%.
Right, so that's like a little pink flag, not a red flag, just a little like, ooh, I guess you guys, I'm sure you guys have it flagged, but I just thought I'd bring it up.
Now I have a question. Do our policies and/or practices allow you to just say a cutoff, and some students are not going to get their choice in that regard?
It's kind of the same, like, because the cap is 25 for most of them, so where, where do the policy allow you to just say, well, now it's 27 or 28, or are you cutting it off?
So it's more like a guideline, but that has, that is an additional item for us to discuss, the class size policy on an annual basis, and we can take a look at that as we begin the scheduling process for next year, but there is no hard stop. You could choose to make that, but it's hard to say to that one child, nope, the school board decided that you don't have this opportunity available to, based on policy.
Okay, so, how about practice? In practice, do you say no?
We have not. However, we do have some additional limitations on a lab-based course. We don't have those same limitations in a math course. So there are some times when, if, just based on pure numbers, if every science class was maxed out at 24, we'd have to look at what our options were.
I'm thinking more in line with the classes, particularly the ones where we do some level of placement and recommendation, and we may have a minimum threshold, but where something has the potential to be over-enrolled, I would think that you have some mechanism to say, okay, we're gonna, we're, this is our capacity, based on the enrollment qualifications, we're going to take the top X number. I mean...
Do we have a policy related to, like, recommendations? Not a policy, or just a procedure?
What typically happens, and it's more, happened more at the high school than the middle school, is Rick will hit class size, and then we usually have a discussion at our weekly meetings, and he'll look at the students, the class, the instructor, because if you're in a, let's use an advanced math class, most of those students in that room are there for the same purpose, and as a result, going from 25 to 27 is not a big deal. Where we really try to be cautious is when we have that, the category I would have fit into, which was right in the middle, you know? Because those students getting the attention can often make a big difference, because some of the motivation isn't self-motivation. So we have regular conversations on that, and we really do try not to have a student, especially if they get to the junior and senior year, miss out on a course that might open further doors for them down the road.
So I think I can, we can double-check to see if there's anything in the class size policy related to that, but I think we got our answer.
Well, there is something in the policy, but there's also the potential for practice, particularly in the areas where it requires approval to get in.
Thanks, yep.
How many overrides we have?
Yeah, the policy, we'll get into it, but it basically hinges on if it's a capstone.
Right.
But that was more on the low end than the high end.
Correct, yep.
The other factor to consider, too, is there are certain courses, and I'm sure we'll identify them in the high school schedule, or ask about them, if you're going to cut a section of seven or eight, and you're going to do that, say, three times, there's 21 kids that have to go somewhere. So then it becomes, where do they go? And, you know, why V-Lax is a nice option, we've already talked about that a million times, it's not for everyone, and the reality is, you're not going to have 21 kids in V-Lax as well. So there's, it's like this exponential when you start doing that. So yes, at the high school, I can, but there's also the, what's the cost to doing that?
There's also staffing limitations on when we've got certified teachers to teach subjects, so, there's a lot of things, but I think it may highlight the need for us to create a framework to allow those decisions to be made.
Put it on the policy.
Well, one of those, is that coming up tonight?
Class size.
No.
Class size is not coming up. In the policies, no. Okay, thank you, Tim, for that report on, it's nice for us to see the class sizes, and that gives us a real insight into what the numbers look like. That's great, thank you. Thanks.
All right, so the, just some qualifiers on mine, so some of you are aware of this, some of you aren't, but things like honors civics and honors economics, those are paired with the regular civics and economics courses, so we're not running sections of just one or two kids in them. That's the contract for honors policy, which you'll see in our program of studies, and I'm sure we'll have some discussion about it. I don't see us offering that in the future. It wasn't something that was subscribed to by large numbers of people, and there is, you know, there's some other things that would need to be worked out. But in any event, that's, those...
Which one were you saying?
Honors civics and honors economics.
Both of them, you don't think they're going to be offered?
No, I don't think so. And I can, I can get into the rationale, too, if you want to ask as part of this, but yeah. Making notes.
I wasn't sure if I missed that you singled something else out.
Nope, just those two. The courses like Guitar II often run together, combined with Guitar I. Journalism II will often run, it does run with Journalism I. The other ones are Acting I and Acting II, and memoirs. We've made those semesterized courses, so kids will, can take both semesters, one or both semesters, so some of the kids are the same kids in the second section of them, so it can look like there's less kids, but they're carrying over from before. It is, it ends up being a smaller section overall, though, in the end. And then there's some of the electives, too, that run a little bit smaller, and I can get into the rationale as well, but generally speaking, for a non, what I'll call foundational level, or some heavy special ed population courses, that's why those are low, unless they're a course, an AP course, which we've traditionally pretty much tried to run, unless they were really teeny-tiny, like AP French, that we've dropped at least a couple of years now, where it's been like three kids. That's, those are, that's, that's pretty much the rationale for the smaller class sizes. Overall, I mean, based on our discussions from last year, and we, you know, we had the addition of the new science teacher, which is greatly appreciated, which was also a challenge to find space, but it's a happy, happy problem to have. I feel like our class sizes are in better shape this year than, I don't, there's not as many, in terms of the actual hard caps lot, there was not as many exceeding this year as there were perhaps last year. And if I do an average of those, I think it comes out to just this core, what you have on your sheet here, which is largely your core curriculum, no study halls and things like that, or really small, special ed-directed studies, you're looking at about a ratio of about one to 18 students. So one staff member for 18 students, which, to me, is kind of the sweet spot. I mean, that's, you don't really want to be lower than that, but, you know, when you start getting into the twenties, then we've had that discussion, too, back and forth, so...
Any questions or comments?
No, I think it looks a lot better than last year.
I agree. Thank you. First of all, I applaud you, there is dramatic changes. I did a lot of sorting on it, and there are only six classes that are over listed, and the largest is only three over, and the rest are one over, so that's a real, real nice change. And, I like the way you, what you clarified, going forward, is there a way that you could indicate in the name of the class, ones that are combined, so that someone reading this off context...
Would know.
Will not all of a sudden think we're making classes for one or two, or...
Yes, that's a...
So that would be, that would be really helpful.
Yep.
Is, is there a curriculum difference between Algebra II and Accelerated Algebra II?
Yes, so Accelerated Algebra II would be more content, it's just it's happening at a faster pace.
Oh, I thought it happened earlier, I thought that was what made it accelerated.
No, it's just faster.
No, it's faster.
The reason I...
It's more, it's more.
Algebra II is one of the ones that's over-enrolled, and Accelerated Algebra II is, is not full, I didn't know if there, if that gives you any opportunity to balance at all.
So, yeah, so those are the, those are the scheduling kinds of conundrums. So basically, you have two Algebra II sections in there that you look at them, and you're like, eh, you could combine them, and/or balance it out somewhere else, but when you're looking at that population, which I think is about 26 kids, call it, if I'm just thinking off the top of my head, you need to create multiple opportunities for them to take that course in a schedule, otherwise, they're going to get boxed out of other things, so that's why they end up being in a less, a smaller size.
No, no, I was more thinking, could any of the people in Algebra II, was there a chance to potentially move them into an under-enrolled Accelerated Algebra II?
Got you.
Because they, you know, if there are the fringes, having a small, being in a small that might mitigate their, whatever the reason, I just, just a thought process.
I, the way, the way I could, there could be, there could be pushback for, that's an extra prep, now that you're assigning a teacher.
And, well, no, could they handle the curriculum, is my, is my thought.
Oh, could the student handle the curriculum?
When you have an overage of Algebra II students, moving, encouraging a couple of them to move into Accelerated Algebra II, if you were on the higher end of that class, so that you could then, because the Algebra, Accelerated Algebra II is still pretty kind of small, so you could... kinda small, so you could, you have room for them, and, but that would be a...
I would be, family decision, yeah.
Just a thought process. And the other, it looks like AP US Gov, Government, Policy is getting low enrollment.
So that's another one, where if you combine the two, you have a much higher number than you want. And given the number of students who want that class, we're obviously giving more leeway to that cohort, by giving them another...
Well, actually, sixteen and six is a total of 22 and 25. I'm just wondering, is that, is that, that seems like a low enrollment for two sections. Is it strictly scheduling?
It's scheduling, yeah. Because if I only offered it in, in one place, I might only have 14 kids taking it, or less.
I'm wondering if we wanna look again at the idea of having some class be on-year and off-years.
We could. I mean, I wouldn't hesitate if it became necessary to do that. It's not certainly where AP French is, but there's been some huge strides made in that curriculum. And I would argue that it's one of the front wonders. When, in terms of their project, they don't do a midterm. They do, they testify at the State House. And it's become, you know, he's piloted some nice work in there. So, I hear what you're saying about the little numbers.
Looking at the total enrollment in AP US History and total enrollment AP US Government.
Yep.
If you, if one was an on-year and one was an off-year, perhaps, I don't know if it's the same people taking both, just at different times, or that sort of thing. Just, we've, we're looking to make room to relieve some of the other pressure. That was just my thought process. But I'll shut up.
That's okay. The only other piece that I would add to that is, they're all very good points. It's just, there's always, like, as you know, you trade one thing for another. If you start offering less AP courses, that affects our ranking and our, obviously, in our best practices committees. We're kind of dealing with that dilemma. Is this better to do this for the ranking? Because people look at it. And so, it is a factor. And the more we offer, and the more kids take, the better our ranking.
And the kids have a lot of things that they wanna take.
Yep.
And so it's important that we make sure that they get what they want and need out of their high school experience. And some of them are more focused on, there are probably some kids who are taking AP History and AP Gov at the same time, because that's their focus. And so, it's great.
Is the running start enrollment up? Looks like bigger numbers this year.
I don't know if it's up over last year, but it's, it's been, the enrollment has been very solid there. I think kids are seeing the value of that program and the fact that they can get college credits for 150 bucks, or whatever it is.
Who dictates the max? Is that the state, or is that us?
Us, yep.
I will speak to that, those two courses specifically. Like, I think a lot of kids take the US History, and then they go to the government, because they kind of do have some overlap. So it benefits kids to take one and then the other. I'm actually in the class with six people, and I feel like a social studies class like that is very discussion-based. So smaller class sizes for those subjects are kind of better. But when I, when I'm looking at this, I am more concerned about, like, honors chemistry. I see we have three sections with only, or with 23 kids in it, and that's a little bit more alarming, because I feel like kids might need more attention in that area. It's like a lot of labs, fire, that, that kind of scares me. And kids might need more attention.
Blasts and burns.
And the content of the class also scares me, but...
It scares me, too.
Scare is a strong word.
Yes.
Is there any, is there anything else?
Well, I did, I knew that we were gonna be talking about class size, so I mentioned it to my field hockey team. I was like, what do you guys think of class size? And they did all say that they feel like their class sizes are growing. I know it's gone down from last size, like, looking at the numbers. But they did feel like, I'm also looking at, like, the AP Lang class seemed pretty big. So...
Which one?
I feel like discussion and lab-based classes are ones that we might wanna try to get down, if that's, I know it's, there's a lot that goes into it. But those classes, when they get too large, you tend to lose, like, the experience, and participation definitely goes down. And if kids are getting lost, then they're getting really lost.
That's a good point. Thanks. I feel like it's just, I just feel like it's better than last year. I feel like there's not as many of these big, big numbers and small, small numbers. So there's still a few that are really small, and a few that are on the bigger side. But I feel like last year, we definitely had a problem with that. And you said we hired a science teacher. We didn't hire a social studies teacher, right?
Correct.
We didn't hire, we added the extracurriculars.
Science.
I was just trying to remember that. So I, I think it looks good, and I appreciate the report, because it really helps us with, you know, conversations around town. That's pretty much what we do, what would I do. So, any other questions or comments?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have anything to add?
No.
No? Good. And was that pretty much your student council report, was just to talk about class size at this point?
Yeah, right now, we're planning, I mean, we're planning a few events. We have homecoming next week. We are working with Sohegan to get a Powder Puff-style game going, but it's gonna take a little bit more coordination. So we don't know if that's gonna happen in November, or in the spring. And then for our policy, we just picked our committees. So we're gonna have two policy committees. One to look at student IDs and how we can use them, or, like, actually use them, I guess, more uses for them. And then traffic, which is always the one that comes up. So, we really wanna make the stop sign after the teacher's law, the second stop sign, a yield sign. So that is our goal. And I know that that involves...
I'm not worried about the fire chemistry if I ever do.
Wow.
That's scary.
There shouldn't be anybody coming down from that.
It's technical.
Technically.
We do have a return yield sign here in the Center of Policy.
Well, some people think that sign is a yield sign anyways.
Yeah, I would say the majority of people coming off of that hill think it's a yield sign.
Okay. So, thank you, everyone. Great. Good job. Thank you. All right. So now we have our discussion. So we are headed to the fiscal year 2019 end of year report. I think this is limited. Great. Okay. Thank you. Let me find that on my...
So we ended our fiscal year on June 30th. And we ended our fiscal year in even better shape than where we thought we would end our year. We had $675,732 in expenses that we saved, or in other words, we budgeted higher than that. So, a couple, when I looked at, we have over 500 expense account lines. And in looking at all of them, most of them showed savings, actually. But if I look at the ones with the biggest numbers, the, a few of the biggest savings were in special education with our out-of-district and contracted services, with transportation in special education, and in professional development stipends for teachers, and also teacher reimbursements. So in those areas, along with not needing to use the $100,000 contingency fund, that's where we saw the biggest savings. So with that amount of savings, and in addition to that, we had the revenue came in higher than we expected, the revenue balance of $223,038. And combining those, we had a total balance at the end of the year of $898,770, which enabled us to fund all of our trusts, athletic maintenance and special ed trust, our contingency fund, and the retained fund balance, fully. And so after reducing those reductions, we come up with an unreserved fund balance of $489,770, which is a nice number to offset our tax rate for the new year. So I don't have any more to say about FY19. Do you have questions? Yes, Tom?
Is there anything specific that you can highlight on the revenue side with that $165,000 other?
Well, the, in the other, that includes the pay-to-play athletic fees. That includes the facility use fees, vocational education reimbursement, and we got a, about a $20,000 Primex rebate for workers' compensation. So that other category really is a lot of things. And what happens is, when the business administrator puts the budget in at the beginning of the year, she's not counting on those things. So that's where we're seeing the big increase. Does that make sense?
I understand. I'm not sure, I think it makes sense only from the standpoint that I would have thought several of the things you mentioned were more predictable. For instance, the student activity is, is, if that's in there, you know, I can't imagine it being budgeted at 5,000, because we know that's gonna be about 70 grand.
Right. And this is something that we spoke about, and she said it will get better going forward.
Okay.
Any more questions about FY19?
I actually have a question, I think, in the expenses category. I think it was the reduction in professional staff training. I can't find the line, right? Didn't you mention that?
Teaching development.
Yeah. Is that teachers not needing that, or not wanting that, or not able to take that?
Oh, when I, so, there's two parts to that. There was, there's the $3,000 stipend for teachers that we budget, what the teachers tell us they intend to earn. And then if they don't...
It comes back.
It comes back to us, right?
Okay.
So that's one. The second one is the reimbursement, which is the My Learning Plan that teachers have, the workshops. So we budget what we, just based on history, think they might use.
Okay.
Because they're eligible to use it. But then if they don't use it, again, that comes back to us.
Okay. So, okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Okay, so FY20, the report as of October 3rd. This is our current fiscal year, starting on July 1st. So I, I just wanna say that, as an overview, this is a very preliminary report. So even though we're showing a balance here of $754,000, we are still daily approving, you know, 20, 30 purchase orders. We like to get the purchase orders and everything encumbered by September 30th. And with the amount of purchase orders that we're dealing with in co-op, it's just not possible. So we're still working on this. So, really, I would say, use this report to look at what the budget is, look at it to see what we've spent so far. But in that encumbrance expected column, that's gonna change drastically. So when I report in, in December, I think we'll have a much more realistic number to give to you. So, the, the other thing I wanted to point out is the, the reductions to the unreserved fund balance at the bottom there. We don't have those yet, so we are right now still using the FY19 numbers on those trust contingency and retain fund balance numbers. I know last time, we talked a little bit about Medicaid. And so you will see on the revenue report now, that budget is not there. There was a little bit in July and August of revenue, $6,414. But as far as we know, that is no longer to be expected. So, any questions on FY20?
Great. Sam, move on to, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job. A lot of work. And we appreciate it. Thank you. Facilities committee update, that's you.
I just wanted to give you a quick update on the field.
Yes.
We received about 60 truckloads of 18-wheelers in the last Monday and Tuesday of this week, which brought in all the crushed stone and everything. And I really do wanna thank the construction company, because they made 48 of those trips on Monday, because we didn't have school. And they, they knew how important it was to try to work around the kids. So it was just going all day long dumping gravel. So they're at the final stages. We expect what they refer to as the carpet to come next week, and that will be the remainder of the project. So your football uprights are in, because they have to be cemented in first. Your steel framing for the scoreboard is up and cemented in. The walkways are put in around the field. If you were to go and look at it, you would notice there is all the poles for the fencing on each of the end zones, or the, the ends, would be eight-foot fencing and four-foot fencing around. They have seeded all the areas. This is a great time to grow grass. They will be back in the spring, to, you know, obviously to...
It's gonna get washed away.
Well, that's, yeah, it's been down for a few days, so we're hoping it doesn't go tonight. The drainage ponds are in. All the drainage has been established. Everything is done. And really, everything that is left to do is above ground with the two main pieces of the carpet and the roadway up to the field in the parking. So, and they're still on target to be gone mid-November. So it's very exciting.
I have to look at it. I haven't seen it at all.
This is kind of a random question. Is there a time that the trucks and everything get there? Are they supposed to start working after students are in the building, or can they just...
They, they actually, their first load will not occur before 7:30, okay? Typically, it's been around 8 o'clock. And their second load, their last load of the day has to be delivered before 2:30.
Okay. I've seen them pulled over in the dirt lot that we don't use. They'll pull over if they're a little early and just wait for everybody to be driven. Mary has that last parking spot right next to where the trucks...
The best park ever.
Best parking spot. I get to see all the things going up. Keep an eye on it.
Thank you. I'll set with that. Next is apportionment. We received a legal opinion. Do you wanna start on that?
Sure. Via the Budget Committee and the School Board Chair, we had reached out to legal counsel to get a, an opinion on apportionment regarding, did we need to change the formula for it to move forward for another five years? And the legal opinion we received on that question was, yes, we did. So I believe later tonight, we'll be having a discussion on deliberations about some thoughts around how we approach apportionment. In my discussions with the Chair, we'd still like to do it as a separate meeting like we did five years ago, because then there was one focus, it allowed people to come, and it was, we were able to get through our business that night. And it also relieved time and effort during the March meeting. So I think there are some thoughts on this that we'll be discussing later. But with the apportionment piece, which we'll get to also during deliberations, I just wanted to touch on it, is legal counsel also recommended that during deliberations, we just vote officially on the last formula. He goes, because it was approved by the legislative body, but then it should come back to the school board. So he'd just like to see us put that into our practice. So when we do a new formula...
So when it happens.
Right. When we do this January, he would like us to come back and do it at the school board. Even though the school board doesn't have the right to override the legislative body, it's just good practice to know that you're affirming what the voters told you.
So we're actually gonna vote tonight to affirm what the voters told us in January of 2015?
Right.
And then we're going to hopefully, so we will have a discussion during deliberations, you think, about how best to crack this nut?
Correct.
Okay. Great.
Any questions around the legal opinion? I think it was pretty straightforward. Okay. On the Budget Committee update, we kind of have two parts, pieces. I wanted to give out, and I'll send a couple down this way. One for myself, and send the rest around. Obviously, sitting here in October, we are well underway with the budget. And I'd like to thank Linda and Kelly, Gina, Bob, and Rick and Tim, because a lot goes into it. And Tim and Rick actually start back in July with Kelly. They leave me out of the mix for a long time, and then I get to come in and slash and burn and get to the, hopefully the number. But I wanted to give you some updates, because we will be presenting to the Budget Committee this month. And rather than kind of having the board get it after the Budget Committee, this way, it keeps us ahead of the curve. And I did it just kind of as a summary. The Budget Committee will get what you're familiar with, which you'll receive next month, is the Excel spreadsheet, the new items list. It's just, we had a budget discussion on Tuesday, and pretty much for each district. Brookline was Friday, co-op was Tuesday. So the turnaround for Kelly is just not doable in a short period of time. So under personnel, we, we have two RIFs for paraprofessionals. That's just based on student enrollment and students aging out. We have, once again, our Point Four in French, that is Point Two at each, the middle school and the high school. We are still concerned about finding a French teacher. So we may do it the way we've been doing it, which is we just increase the load of, one of our own teachers and stipend them, you know. But we will probably go out and advertise and see what comes in, because we'd love to hire somebody. We are also looking at our staffing levels for our athletic administration and our maintenance staffing. In the SAU budget, we are asking for a facilities director. Obviously, if that position goes through, we do not need to have an administrative position at the co-op, so you would see a reduction in the co-op budget. So as much as people would see their SAU portion increase, the co-op portion would decrease. So it's kind of a net, ultimately. We just feel working with Kelly for the capital improvement projects, supervising maintenance, working with our principals on building security and building maintenance would be a, really, a big help. Once again, we are requesting sharing staff at the SAU level, position of directed nurse, which we were able to incorporate... which we were able to incorporate a portion of that this year because we received further funding through the IDEA grant. So, Amy allocated that to our largest need, which is, was at the co-op district. We're looking at a custodial substitute and a food service substitute. That just the nurse shared would be $40,900. So, I don't know if all three of those will make it through the budget, but our priority would be the nurse position. In the area of stipends, Rick has asked for two new stipends, one for art, one for Greek and Latin. Those are $200 apiece if approved. The high school is also seeking to increase the stipend for Gitanate and HP the Change. These increases are being recommended at $2,000 to align with other clubs and activities that have the same expectations and requirements. And I relate them to like Student Council was the example Rick and I were discussing the other day. And at the middle school, Tim is requesting that we institute detention stipend for students two days a week. He feels that would be a good disciplinary tool to have in their arsenal, as well as to get them prepared for something that we do have at the high school. In terms of academics, Rick is requesting $41,137 for textbooks and workbooks. The two major purchases are honors physics in Algebra I and II. Those two purchases account for $29,000 of the 41. And then Tim is trying to phase in new graphing calculators. We have a set at the middle school, but approximately 10 of them are at their useful life. So, we're looking to buy 10 and again next year and just kind of get into that cycle so we don't have one major expense and we don't have all 30 of them going on us at one time. New computer equipment, Rick had already gone through Phase One of his tech proposal. That focuses on engineering, computer science, and physics. The approximate cost is $97,750. And Tim is requesting a set of Chromebooks for science and English. So, that's two sets at 25 per set with the accompanying cuts of $11,600. In the area of replacement equipment, good friend HB1612 has led us to realize that certain computers that we have will not run Windows 10, which is the minimum requirement under the new law for safety and security. That's going to result in us replacing computers at the high school and middle school. The majority of Rick's replacements happen to fall under his tech proposal. But Tim has about 42 or so laptops and desktops. So, to replace those to comply with HB1612 is $44,840. Safety, Rick has Phase Two of school cameras in his budget. As you know, over the last couple of years, the middle school has done significant upgrades, so they don't have a request under the safety cameras at this time. Athletics, Brian has requested approximately 17,000 for items related to our teams. We're looking at field hockey goals, an ice machine, middle school volleyball nets, and a soccer scoreboard. We will analyze these requests before we proceed because we're also looking at with the new field coming onboard, we're just trying to balance how many games will be played on that field? How much will the old soccer field see? So, should we be replacing a soccer scoreboard if it's going to become more of a practice facility? So, we'll be working with Brian closely over the next couple of months. The largest thing that we have as a, as a district is both of our buildings are aging. And the new items request in this area from Rick and Tim, working with Kelly and CAIPs and all, everybody that was involved, is about $740,000. Now, we don't expect to fund that. We'll do what we always do. We'll, we'll rank order them, we'll prioritize them, we'll put some in this year's budget. We'll develop plans to phase some of them in over time. And some of them, based on final evaluations, will actually be moved to FY22. So, we'll have a further breakdown. But I did want to highlight a couple of things that you will see pretty much, and hopefully, they'll make it through the budget. Both the high school and middle school need new intercom systems. Those are about $19,000 apiece. We have Phase Three of the roofing schedule. If you recall, Kelly put a roofing schedule together about three or four years ago, and it's been working very, very well for us. So, the next section of, on that plan is for $50,000. And there are $20,000 of related brickwork and masonry work to go along with that. Rick, as he outlined, I think it was a couple of meetings ago, has put in money for road paving. Phase One, we were calling it from Jeff Smith Road to the bridge, is about $60,000. And that's for a complete...
What's the bridge?
I call it the bridge. It says you're going over the swamp.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of, it is a bridge.
You have the stop sign.
Yes, the yield sign, yeah.
I hardly thought of it as a bridge. It's a bridge.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yep.
Tim is requesting funds for a section of the backside of this building to be repaved. We're still waiting on the exact quote of that that we're working on. And then our middle school elevator is approaching its end of life. But what I'd like to do, and I'd like to kind of go back to Linda's report for a second because there are two pieces there. One, right now, and again, it's, it's a long way from being over. We're projecting $345,000, $548 in our unreserved fund balance. A year ago at this meeting, we were projecting negative $100,000, and we turned about $800,000. So, there's big fluctuations in that. And a lot of it is dependent on student placement in indoor district versus out-of-district services. But if that number continues to run well for us, I would either have three options to recommend to the board. A, sometime in the spring, we spend money out of FY19 to address some of these...
FY20.
FY20, thank you. FY20 to address some of the maintenance items that we've kind of had to defer. Or B, we, if we know we're going to have a larger balance, we simply increase the maintenance trust and allow the voters to affirm that that's what we'd like to do. And the last option is looking at the retained fund balance of $142,000. That's the number that the state allows us to carry over. And that money can only be spent with board approval and Budget Committee approval. So, the third recommendation could be to increase that, and this is where I'm looking at, the elevator. If we increase that by the $70,000 for the elevator, then when the elevator went, we've already got a plan for it, and it's just a matter of implementing that plan. So, there's some options if we continue to run a solid budget as we're projecting right now. And then the last item we issued is just the warrant articles. We have the HESAC contract for $81,139. Our annual contingency article of $100,000, which comes from the budget unreserved fund balance. We're projecting an SAU assessment around $930,000. That'll change as we go through that process. The athletic trust, we're again looking at $67,000. The maintenance trust is the one I'm saying it should be, to be determined because I think at some point, we've got to figure out a maintenance plan. Because as the buildings age, we can't keep deferring this while we're going to end up in a large deficit. And then our special education trust, we're just putting the minimum in. That runs well. We have had, not had to use that yet, but that gives us a great safety net. And so, that's kind of the projection we're going to take via the Excel spreadsheet and that to the Budget Committee this month. The consumer price index is running about 2%. That has typically been used when we set guidance for people at home that don't know what guidance is. In the cooperative district, our special ed expenses, as well as our approved contracts, are not part of guidance because those are already funded and approved by the voters. What we look at for guidance is our annual operating budget and the numbers that we have control over and flexibility. I think if you said to me kind of what are the sacred cow, I think the first one has got to be the high school tech plan. I think we are doing remarkable work. But I think we need to give our students the tools at the next level. And I think Rick has put together a very solid plan. If we needed to adjust it, we could. And then I think the other piece besides the normal pieces is, is the maintenance of the buildings. That is my, my biggest fear because we have further roofs coming up and other things coming up. And I'm not a fan necessarily of bonding it. I wouldn't even mind, I think we can create a case to the voters if you want to do it as a separate warrant article that didn't come from unreserved fund balance and approach it through that mechanism as well. Because I think, I think everybody understands, just like they fix their homes, we have maintenance and upkeep to the buildings. And we've been doing a very good job, but when we looked at the list the other day, at $740,000, that, that's starting to get me a little concerned.
Yeah.
Because how are we going to catch up? Because there's always something next. And I think it's partly because when times are difficult, like everybody at home, we tend to defer our home maintenance.
So, when you say a separate warrant article, you're saying putting a separate warrant article, not bonding it, but putting it separate from the budget?
I'm saying...
And then adding it onto the budget?
Correct. What, my, my worry is that right now, we fund maintenance to unreserved fund balance. We may have a balance this year that we could ask for a larger amount than we typically do and give the voters that. My worry is the year when we don't have that fund balance, yet we still have a half a million dollars' worth of expenses. I think one of the biggest things I worry about is tax spikes. So, I think if you get a maintenance trust article and people become accepting of that and you have logical CIP plans that are being carried out, and you utilize the money for what you said you were going to use it, I think that's the best way to go. But there's a long way between now and our discussions with the Budget Committee. I just wanted to give you some thoughts early of what we're facing. And I, and I think, you know, when we did our numbers the other day and anybody who, I think we were all there, I want to say we were, our entire budget, operating wise, I think was up just about 5%. So, we're at a 5% before I've made my, my cuts. So, I think we're going to be able to bring in a, in a good budget. It's just a matter of balancing that. And, you know, one avenue we could take is if we're running a balance in April and May, is just to say to Rick, okay, we'll fund Phase One of paving out of FY20. And then if the voters pass the warrant, that'll fund Phase Two of paving, you know, that type of thing. And again, we'll allocate money, not money, time next month to kind of really delve into the budget more. I'll be able to, along with Cindy, give you a sense of what the Budget Committee thought of the round one and move from there. And any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I don't want to derail the conversation, but I'm just looking in the academic section and are we offering an honors physics course? Is that the name of the textbook or is that a move...
Not this year.
Oh, so it is?
The intent is to offer it next year for our studies.
Is that good?
Yeah. I do have a follow-up. Is that going to replace Principles and Problems? Or will Principles and Problems be combined with conceptual and there will be some three...
The idea is that we'd have three physics. Physics, we'd combine just physics, just call it physics. And then have honors physics and AP physics.
Cool.
That's it.
Yeah, I was wondering about the whole honors physics thing too. That kind of threw me. It gives me a look forward to in the November meeting.
Yes.
I love to talk about physics. Any other questions? Yes?
I'll start with a trivial. Greek and Latin club? What, I'm just really surprised that there's even a desire for it.
Such a thing? So... It's a fair, it's a fair question. So, we, our current Latin teacher that we, that we brought on has done an amazing job creating interest in the subject matter. He's, you know, and I hope he does it again this year. He was able to bring in, I'm just giving you an example of some of the interest he's generated, but folks from UNH came in and did a, professors came in and did an archaeological, kind of like, well, say a mock dig type of thing in the library. So, there are kids, there...
I just, I thought Latin, you were contemplating last year that it might be going away. So, this is just a 180-degree turn because there didn't seem to be much interest. It seemed to be declining interest in Latin, I thought.
I never thought it would go away. The numbers were a little low, but I think kids have really gravitated, yeah.
Projected cost of calculators, I'm just surprised at the money because you can buy them brand new for a hundred bucks a piece at Walmart. So, I think that's a lot of money for them, but in the grand scheme of things, it's trivial.
So, just to talk, so we have to purchase our items through a vendor that we can use a PO for? So, yes, the back-to-school sale, you can get those TI84s for $100, but not necessarily through vendors that we can...
Can you use Staples?
Utilize.
Yep, Staples has it at the same price. But just, just a few more. On the athletics, those items that are listed in the parentheses sound like poster children for use of the athletic trust.
Correct. And that's why I say we're analyzing where they'll end up. Because we also try to offset some of the transportation uniforms and things like that out of athletic trust as well.
So, I just, I'm sure that's going to be a Budget Committee...
Yes, absolutely.
On the facilities, I'll just weigh in. In terms of a big chunk thing for the, for the elevator, especially, and some of these others that are truly capital improvements from the standpoint of depreciation in the traditional sense, I would like to see them funded in a way that involves two things. One is public awareness slash approval, whether it be through a hearing or an actual vote. And two, looking at them closely to see if they are, if they should be funded in a manner that would come under the EV apportionment as opposed to the ADEA apportionment because they relate to the building and the facility as opposed to the day-to-day operations for the curriculum.
Yep, very good points.
And then the, the last question about the maintenance trust. What's our current cap on it? Do we, what's our current cap on it?
We don't have a cap on it. We work...
Do we have, did we have a, an agreed maximum that we were going to, is that the one that we had an agreement?
No, that was the special ed trust.
Okay.
The, the goal we had tried was to increase the maintenance trust. And then last year, the Budget Committee felt strongly regarding the fire panels, that it should come out of the maintenance trust. So, there's about an $80,000 balance. We have a significant portion of roof coming up either next year or the year after at about $120,000. So, it's trying between maybe this year and next year to be able to assure the voters that we can fund that. I don't want, I don't think it's really good for us to say bond a roof for that because when you bond a roof and you do the entire thing, I mean, 20 years from now, you have to do it again. By Kelly's approach, we'll have phases, so the roof should never be a significant one-time repair again.
Yep, thanks.
Any other questions? Comments?
Just a comment. The Budget Committee does plan on doing their preliminary guidance this month.
Thanks. I have no questions. There's a lot of information. I appreciate you giving this to us before you go to the Budget Committee with your spreadsheet. I appreciate that. Because now we're kind of like up to speed, which is great. Okay, at this point, on the agenda, we have topics for future agendas, which we can look at to the list that was sent to us in our packet. And also, as board members, if we have anything that we want to weigh in on, it would be great to hear if there's something that you're looking for so that we can plan for it. So, I'm going to scroll down to that.
Sure. I just want to provide some background. So, I thought it would be best to take a look at the cyclical nature of our conversations before trying to think of when we should bring up certain topics because sometimes they fit better at a particular time of year. A couple of things that I didn't include here, but we typically have an annual discussion of, like we just started to now, the athletic trust and how to use it in any particular year. So, having that conversation. Also, in January, we're due to have a conversation about our MOA with Harbor Homes because that was a one-year agreement. And then February 2015 was when we approved IIB, which is class size policy. And it says that we are going to be taking a look at that annually. So, whether it's February that we take a look at it in light of, okay, now we have course registration and we're starting to build a new schedule, is that the best time, you know, to take a, a look at it and have a conversation? But anyway. And certainly, these are flexible and as things come up, different items get on the agenda, but these tend to be the, the items that we speak about annually.
That's great. And so, it's good to have this all laid out so that we know that what the topics should be or could be. Does anyone on the board have any other pieces that they're interested in? Does anyone on the board have any other pieces that they're interested in during program?
Program of studies. Program of studies. Yeah, so based on the work of the Instructional Practices Committee, Program of Studies was intentionally delayed this year just in case there were any major changes that would be recommended.
But we don't feel like the Instructional Practices Committee is going to be making a lot of recommendations before-
Probably not. It just depends on how that first committee meeting goes, yeah. I could see it going, I could see it going different, mine in particular going real fast or real slow.
Which one are you on?
Top 10.
I thought this was a great opportunity for board members to speak of things that they might be interested in. And so I've only thought of a couple of things that I'd love to hear about because you guys mentioned these things and I think I'd love to get a little bit of a presentation or a little information about them. I know we have a social and emotional learning committee and you guys talk about it and you mentioned different pieces. But I'd love to see a summary of what's going on with that. I don't know who would do that, but just a general summary of that and maybe what the goals are, what's coming out of that committee. Just as I'd love to see Instructional Practices Committee do reports and Budget Committee and all the reporting out policy. And then also, I've heard that we've done a lot of work with K through 12 writing. And I don't know, I think you probably have a plan to present that, but I, having my background that I have, I'd love to have a little bit of information on that.
Sure. Just to clarify, it was the, we have a solid program in the co-op, so the bulk of the work for writing was K-6. But that certainly feeds into our 7 through 12 and only enhances what we're doing here. The other piece of that is we did have a meeting K-12. I can't remember if it was the last March PD or the November PD where the, all the writing teachers got together and really looked at the full K, the 12 approach and just make sure we're all in line, so.
Well, that's great. Those are the only two things that I've kind of heard, but not, I felt like I could have more depth on at this point. And in terms of the budget and response to the budget and the goals of the budget, I think you're pretty much on target with all the things that I've been thinking about or that constituents that I speak to are talking about, which is maintaining the quality of education that we have. And not surprising that we're struggling, we might have some building struggles given the age of our buildings. Tom? No, no, no. I appreciate your comments. They're really so thoughtful.
I'm just looking at the entire outlining and the majority of items on there deal with lack of better bureaucracy. I would really like to see us highlight activities towards understanding and evolving the curriculum. And have it happen early enough that having to publish the Program of Studies does not become a barrier to doing anything. I find that we frequently have these discussions around the time Program of Studies come out and said, "Well, we can't do anything about it now. Let's wait and look at it for next year." And I don't really see it there. And I'm hoping that with the proposed revised focus of the strategic plan on the student chair, that in coordination with the strategic plan work, we will have a framework in which to address this stuff. So I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty of which meeting to put it in or what. But that would be, my goal is to see more emphasis on that. And where we do have a pretty functional Budget Committee and a lot of engagement, I don't mind there being updates on the agenda. But I would be comfortable with less emphasis for budgetary discussion and encourage the board members who are really interested in that to potentially attend Budget Committee meetings.
Anything, anyone else? Melanie?
Something, yes, thank you.
Sorry, you're all the over there.
In Concord, we have this bill regarding civic engagement. And one of the things that we're hearing a lot is that history, social studies, and civics is not being taught in school, especially in the lower grades. And I know that's not us, but I'm very interested and I don't know if it's applicable to, you know, all of your concerns. But when I saw all the civics and social studies and history, I felt like, you know, we're doing a good job. But I'd like to have an overview of that if possible. And also, if you could build with what's being done at the lower levels.
Definitely. I think it's the perfect time for that. The focus this year is on social studies, K to 12, because the state at some point will be releasing the new standards. It was expected last spring, but any minute now, they're going to come to us. But our work will begin next month as a K to 12 district, looking at what we do, with what resources, and where do we want to go.
And actually, I think a board member mentioned to me that it would be great if we ended our meetings, maybe right before we adjourn or right before the process observer with just a time to maybe mention some highlights, some things that, it's a good idea. Like, could explain it a little bit more?
Yeah, no, just, it was just something, you know, it sounds scary to say every single meeting to add this to the agenda, but I'm talking like five minutes max. But just to give a quick overview, all in one piece. I know, you know, our principals sometimes highlight dates and you guys highlight dates, but even just having it on a one-page calendar form, anything just for the next 30 to 45 days. So it highlights not just for us as board members, events, it might be sports. Some things are on our calendars right now, whether, you know, for the high school, they plug in dates early for musicals and things like that. But just different events to highlight, fun things that are going on that, you know, board members might want to attend, community members might want to attend. And it also just gives, you know, in that five minutes, if, you know, administration throws out, "These are upcoming events," it also allows board members to say, "I attended last month this thing at the high school," or "I went to the middle school and it was great." And just, it's a nice way to end meetings, just to bring back the focus on what we are all here for. And it's, you know, but it was just something I would like to see in the future. But I promise it only adds a few minutes. And sometimes there's nothing. If you didn't go to anything that month, there's nothing to say. But it's a nice way to bring that information to the meeting.
Well, it piggybacks upon what Melanie was saying. We do a lot of stuff in civics and econ and social studies, and our kids are actively engaged in that. And many times you hear, or you see on social media, they don't even teach history anymore. They don't even do civics anymore. And so although we don't have public and we don't know who's watching, just to get in the minutes that we have had kids go to Concord and testify, we have, I believe, the middle school sends kids up for a history day. I mean, those kinds of things that we publicize on the websites, they go on the college program school website, they go on the high school website. But this is our opportunity to make sure that it's being kind of showcased a little bit. So, so that we have more information out there about the great things that we do.
If I could ask, Andy, is that something you could potentially take back to Student Council?
Yeah.
Because I think that would be, because there are things sometimes as administrators, we're not necessarily even aware of. You know, I mean, we know, like, the school play, we know all those things. But I think there are so many things that go on that if you could work with Student Council to do like just a one-pager, just this is going on, or this went on, I know that would be very well received.
Yeah, definitely. I know there's a lot of like, sort of underground things, like individual clubs will put on or stuff like that that doesn't necessarily get publicized, so yeah.
That'd be excellent. Thank you.
Great. That's a good task. There you go. Thank you. Are there any other board members' comments? Anyone else? Thank you. So I guess at this point, we're going to move on to the enrollment projections. Does Andy need to stay for this?
No.
No. You're welcome to leave at this point. Thank you. And usually, it's fine for you to leave pretty much after the principal's report, so after the student council report. But sometimes it's great to stay because we are like a rocking group here. And we have candy. Did you get candy?
I did get-
Did you get pizza?
As long as Mrs. Whalen comes, there's candy.
We can have pizza in the school.
So projections, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I just, in your board packet, I had provided you with just the NESDEC, which is the annual report we get from the company regarding our enrollment projections. And what we're seeing, just more so from a global point of view, is they're projecting growth for us over the next 10 years. We're going to see that in our Brookline and Hollis School districts, before we see that in the co-op. We are seeing that already. There has been a wealth of development in Brookline with a number of new homes going in. And just to give you an example, in, you know, the next few years, we're at 24, 25 was the projected enrollment. And then in 2029, they're projecting us to be 2,956 students. Depending where those students fall, that's going to require some building. I mean, we're pretty much, am I correct, high 80s, old 90s in room usage, Rick?
Oh, I would say we're well over that, probably like in the 93% range, and 85 again is capacity.
Five years, it's projecting us to be at that peak level when we were in disaster zone.
And we have, remember, we have more programs that we're offering now. So now, those little cubbies don't exist anymore.
Exactly.
I'm not trying to run anything- We have rectangular tables in the cafeteria, so.
Come check out the wellness hallway during lunch if you want an activity to visit.
So the main reason is not to sit here and talk about the enrollment is to get the projections out because there had been this notion that our enrollment was going to be declining. And we've never seen that significant a decline. We did go down from the peak years. But the last three or four, especially at the high school, were kind of stabilized and been probably the low of around 830, Rick, somewhere right in there.
That was a low with a bubble class.
Yeah. And now back to 857. And again, we have a little bit of a bubble coming through again, but overall, it's going to remain pretty constant. So I just want to get this out.
We are showing the high school being all over the map.
Yeah.
It goes 855, 829, 840, 878, 812, 836.
We get pockets of, one of the things I see that makes it tough to read is you get pockets of what I'll call like sports transfers. In and out, sometimes the groups of kids decide that one year, they're all going to BG. And then there's, the next two years, we get a bunch of kids coming back and that makes it really hard to-
Especially when you're dealing with a high school that has 855 students. You know, 10 students makes a difference, 15 students makes a difference. Like, you know, if you had 5,000 students, it wouldn't, but it does make a difference, so.
So I just wanted to get those out for budget purposes. The Budget Committee will spend some time on those. And also in your packet, I wanted to provide you the budget timeline. For those who haven't seen this before, we have our action of what we are required to do. That is governed by whatever there are for RSAs around that particular piece. Then we have what we call our traditional districts, which is the annual town meeting. And Brookline is a SB2 town, so there's slightly difference just in terms of how the process is done. Big dates for the co-op, our public hearing date is February 5. And then we get down there and we're looking at the school district meeting day of 317. We built in a day 318 because it's easier to publicize it than try to find dates the night. And then we have a snow date of 319. Now, we hope that we don't use 318 and that 317 is just an absolutely beautiful day and we're all going home. I do. I absolutely do.
Wear green.
Yep.
Was this, was this the one that went to council?
Yes.
Because it's all different from the one Darlene had, so I just wanted to make sure there weren't two copies.
Is this something that towns can put, we have to actually vote on this, don't we?
Well, we're at the point now where there's not a lot of wiggle room, with one being SB2 and the other two-
Do we have to vote on it?
In terms of the dates that this- You can take an official vote. I mean, we've checked with both towns.
I didn't have to have procedural input.
I think we historically have, but-
Yeah.
Well, historically, we have, but I didn't have procedural input. The reason, as you know, Tad's asking for it, and I don't know whether I can say yes these are the dates.
Kelly has communicated directly with Tad. Because again, we always have to work with Brookline and Hollis to get everybody in the mix. So I don't think there's a need for a vote tonight. I'd rather go through the Budget Committee, get any input they might have, give Brookline and Hollis a crack at it, looking at it, and then we can vote next month.
I've got some 2019 dates and all on there too, but maybe just some typos in there.
Thank you very much. We'll correct that.
There's a few of them, so. So that's a Tuesday, the 17th is Tuesday.
Yeah, but if you look down the co-op, day two, the snow date.
Yeah, those are the 19-
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of the snow date ones are-
Okay, thank you for catching those.
And does that last?
Last and after the voting day.
Last and after the voting day.
So that Brookline knows all their other commitments.
Okay. Melanie, that makes sense. It's great.
And we'll come back again with that next month and give you any other updates, or anything that came up in the other meetings or any feedback we might get from the towns.
Great. Thank you. Just going to need a minute to get organized here. Okay, so at this point, we can move forward to, nobody had any other comments on that, right? You're not going to have, you'll be okay if it's St. Patrick's Day, please?
I'll bring-
You'll be okay? Okay, good.
I just don't know whether there will be either uproar or a lasting tension as a result.
We've had it on the 17th before. Yep.
We've also had some that only had 90 people.
Yep.
And those were faster.
Yep.
I believe it might be college student, you know, UNH's break, some breaks, so we can encourage some of our alumni to come back and attend the meeting. Great. So at this point, we're at deliberations. We need to look first at approving the articles of agree, the updated articles of agreement. So I need a motion to approve them. By Tom? Seconded by?
Second.
Melanie, thank you. Is there any discussion on this? I mean, I think this is kind of a boilerplate thing, but okay.
Are we trying to make it accurate? The reason I say Article 7 is-
It's not accurate.
Is pre-budget made.
Right, I saw that too.
And it a lot, it basically has it locked out.
Right.
But I didn't know if we actually wanted to acknowledge it.
And did we ever take a vote? Did we ever, is there a potential that that was a change that was made?
Well, it has to be voted in at some-
At some point, we voted in a Budget Committee? Not the board, the co-op, the humans in the towns voted in, a change in that. So I do, I have that question too, like-
What I would recommend is let me do some research with Don because that's going to exist in one of the town meeting minutes and find out what year that changed. Because what we'd like to do is approve the latest article, and this is what Jim had as our legal representative. So that obviously was missed at some point.
Well, see, the last line is that if at any future date the cooperative school district goes to adopt a reasonable budget act, this committee will be dissolved.
So that might have changed.
It did occur. It's not necessarily valid. The question is whether there is any benefit to updating it to acknowledge that that occurred.
Well, I think it should because I would say they're not advisory. I mean, from the standpoint, they're creating the budget. So I think that's-
And it doesn't have this, it doesn't have this composition either.
Right. So let me go back to Jim. I'll reach out to Don to do the research and we'll bring this back. We're only five years late, so I don't think another month is going to matter.
But in the meantime, we should, I believe, approve the change from 2015, right? Or do you want to bring it back completely? Like, do you want to not vote on it now, like table this vote?
I would table this vote and do it all at once.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so Tom is moving to table. Second?
Second.
So moving to table by Tom, seconded by Beth. It's not a discussion, and all those in favor of tabling the motion? That's five. Oh, oh, okay. All right. So we need to look into the, to see what action the board will take regarding the formation of a committee to study and potentially recommend changes to the apportionable formula. I'd like to discuss this before we make the motion. Is that possible to do it that way?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So just a little background. As we know, the legal opinion is that in order to reset the repos of the five years, there needs to be a voted-in change to the apportionable- the repos of the five years, there needs to be a voted-in change to the apportionment, apportionment formula. And so, I think, as school board chair, that we, as a board, should be proactive and work on analyzing the apportionment formula, taking a look at it, and coming up with possibly some suggested changes to that formula, and moving through that process as quickly as possible towards the goal of, the goal would be to have a special meeting sometime after January 12th, because I think it was approved on January 12th, 2015, and sometime before our district meeting. And it basically puts that proposal in the hands of the school board and the Budget Committee, the people who've been working with this formula. So, as many of you are probably aware, there's a couple of different ways to do that. We could create a committee that's made up of just a couple of board members from each the BudCon and the school board, and we could ask them to report back in November, and with a suggested change, or maybe just an analysis of it. The second option would be to workshop it, to invite both of, all boards, the two boards together, to a special workshop, and again, look at it, analyze it, do some analysis of it, and figure out what we would like to do with it, and with the goal of having it presented, with, we'd have to have a hearing, and we'd have to have a special meeting. And the third option, which is not my favorite, is to create a committee, like the committee that existed five years ago, and a, a larger committee made up of more members of the community. But I personally believe that that would not be, you would not be able to have a special meeting if you did it that way. I think it would take a long time if we put a big committee together. So, I kind of laid that out. I'd like to hear from other board members' opinions and thoughts. Anyone? Before we decide how we're going to make the motion, we sort of need to know what we're going to make the motion on.
Well, being one that was on the large committee in 2014 for the 15, I'm not sure that all those meetings were really potentially worthwhile for what we needed to come to, and we still didn't have a unanimous when we brought it to the special meeting. I mean, the workshop, I don't know how the Budget Committee feels, how, you know, how much they want to be involved, other than just the, you know, two people that were on it before. It was Darlene and Brian, myself and Tom. I would be willing to do a small committee, but three would be my last choice.
The large. I do want to say that I did pull the minutes from the special meeting on January 12th. Actually, I had some help with that, but thank you very much, helper. And the apportionment formula that was, that we currently have, was approved in a, let me find it, make sure I give you the right numbers. It was carried 672 yeses to 351 noes. So, I did a little math, and it was about 65 or 66%. Me doing math is not a good thing, but I did, I did use my calculator, so. So, it was a significant majority that approved it, not as significant as I would have thought, but.
Does it require a?
Simple majority.
Simple majority.
Simple?
So, my feedback is that we did a lot of work five years ago, and what I would really like to see is a combination of the first and the second, because if you have more people inputting and representing our towns, et cetera, in that budget process, I think that we can take back and, and bring feedback from our towns. But you probably need a couple, like a tighter team to actually write it up.
And get the work done.
Yeah.
Well, we are, we're on a tight timeline.
Yeah.
So, usually, the more people involved with something like this, the harder it is to get people involved, you know, to get people together, so.
Right. So, maybe one, one workshop day that we can all give input, and then the smaller group puts it together?
That was, that was what I, you know, mentioned, too, is just the workshop. I don't really like number three, but I don't like number one alone either, without having that feedback and having, you know.
Dude, like a larger consensus group, larger group to do. Right.
Yeah, just like, like Melanie said, at least a, a one-time shot at, you know.
Can I just ask a point of clarification? Do you view it as the smaller group would host a meeting, and then anybody who has interest in apportionment could come and have a discussion that night, and it would be their job to decipher that information? I'm just trying to.
I think we were presenting the idea of a workshop at the Budget Committee and the school board, getting together and having a workshop and workshopping at it, and then potentially either coming up with a proposal within that workshop, or maybe the Budget Committee, maybe the two groups will come together and say, we're the committee, and we're, we'd like more people to come up with this. So, that's sort of, I guess, how we were viewing it.
Thank you, that touched me a lot.
I do want to publicly say that if this is, this will be on the agenda probably for the next few months, and we would obviously always appreciate public input, and people can also actually send emails and send input, because we have not had, as far as I know, a lot of negative public input on the current apportionment formula, or positive. We haven't had any, as far as I know, even at our meetings, so, our larger meetings. Public input.
Other than the, there's a, a couple of people in the committee who have made their thoughts known and continue to make their thoughts known, both at our.
Right.
But usually, it does not surface until we get closer to budgeting time, when there's actual budget hearings being conducted.
So, do you have a preference, Tom, on how this goes about?
Personally, no. I, I'll just leave it at that, no, I don't. I'm willing to participate and support it in whatever manner is reasonable. When I say that, I, I'm, of the, the one and two, of three, I'm, I'm in the same camp with Cindy. It was an interesting exercise. It was extremely illuminating, and I think it highlighted the challenges of the task. I don't think doing it again would necessarily produce new knowledge or make it any more, that were more productive. And in our conversations leading up to this, you explicitly said that your preference would be that it be a board proposal as opposed to a community proposal? And if that's the context, three is not the way to get that.
Yeah, no, I do feel like it should be a board proposal. I feel like that's our responsibility, and that's what I've been elected to do, is to kind of take a look at it and analyze it. If we had a committee that got together and said, actually, no, for, you know, a variety of reasons, I mean, I think that would be why maybe a workshop would kind of work that out. What are the logistics of doing a workshop? Does an administrator have to be present for a workshop?
It would likely be posted as a meeting.
Yep.
And minutes would have to be taken. But other than that, it, there's no formality.
Okay. Okay. So, it seems like we have a couple people who really feel. I, I can go either way on that, and I do agree that the more voices being heard, the, the better. I do think it's going to be short, a short timeline, so it's, you know, I think having an invitation to Budget Committee members and school board members to get together, but the, but I don't see this as being 15 emails trying to find a date. It's more like, we'll find a date with a few of the, you know, a date that I'm available, Darlene's available, a few other dates, and then whoever can come and has interest in coming should come. And it would be a public meeting, so people from the public could certainly weigh in, we'd have opportunity to do that, so.
I think, I think the, the thing you want to make clear, if it is in fact the intent, is that if, if one of the goals is to have a, be able to have a vote to change it so that it locks for another five years, that has to be understood, and everyone involved needs to understand that the only way to do that is to make a change.
Right, right. And that's been made very clear to us through the legal opinion, that a change needs to happen. It doesn't have to be a significant change, but it has to be a change to the formula in some capacity.
Melanie, have you given any further thought to the idea of restarting the bill from last year that was, they tried to do in the House?
I only have 15 days to do that, and I can do that.
How many?
15.
One of the five?
Our filing period just opened, so, yeah, we can.
Did you, did you, were you able to contact any of the people involved with last year's effort?
No, but I will, if it's something that you want to move forward with.
Well, the reason is, if, if you were going to do that, and there was any reasonable expectation that it could be successful, that you could actually get a vote on it, it might create a reason to ask for the public's patience in deferring this activity for one Because if there is the potential option of preserving what we do now, if the public wanted it, that might be a, a reason to shoot for that. That's my only thought.
Okay, I can talk to Drew and to Jim Belanger.
Okay, thank you.
In the meantime, I think we should make a, a motion to form a committee, or I guess a committee to study, and the committee would be made up of.
Do we form a committee, or just have a workshop?
Workshop, whatever, however.
You're looking at a committee, you have a workshop.
Okay, so then we'll call it a committee. So, how do we board that? I mean, we'll call it a workshop, sorry. So, I need a motion by a member to approve the.
I, I move to authorize.
Thank you.
The board chair to coordinate with the Budget Committee Chair to set up a workshop to review possible change, proposed changes to the apportionment formulation.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Seconded by Beth. We've already discussed this, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? We've got five, so, great, thank you. All right.
Would that work for you?
That works for me, that's fine, I've got it, it's good with me.
Do you do anything out?
Is it raining?
Is it doing anything out?
No, it's not doing anything.
Break. Okay, so, we are now on to the policies. All of these policies that are being presented tonight are for first reading, so, we'll move, I'm on hold. Move to the first policy, and I need a motion to put it on the floor as a first reading, so.
Yeah, I move to approve, are we doing IMBC first?
No. Yes, IMBC, so sorry, I don't know, but yes.
I move to approve IMBC as presented for first reading.
By Tom. Second? Seconded by Beth. Okay, so, the alternative credit options policy, please forgive the highlights, that just came out when I.
Did a search.
Did a search, and then I didn't, and I just copy and pasted it, and the highlights came through. So, the highlights, just, just highlighting those words, alternative and credit. So, the main goal of the policy committee for this particular policy was to eliminate some language that referred to maximums, eight-year, eight maximums in a high school career, and limits, because we're legally not allowed to have those maximums and those limits. So, we had to remove that language. We also wanted to make sure that the principals still had an opportunity to weigh in, to take a look at, approve some of the applications that come through, and we wanted to make sure that it was the principal and his or a designated. So, those were the main changes that we made, and you'll see in all three policies, they're related, and we basically made the same change, after really looking at it and making sure that we're meeting the needs of our students who want to have alternative credit options, but also trying to make sure that we are always paying attention to the quality of education that we provide, and, and making sure that we're not undermining that by allowing things that don't make sense. So, that is why the principal still has the, or his or a designated, still has that opportunity. And then also, there is still the academic review committee in place as well. I believe. Should be. Do we have them in there? Yes, sorry.
I have a question, not so much about the policy, but the programs that we're implementing that would fall under there. Can you share that with us, please?
Well, currently, what it tends to be, and doesn't, it's not, doesn't have to always be these things, but it could, we could be talking about VLAX, which we often mention. We could be talking about Odyssey Ware, which is our own in-house version of VLAX, for lack of a better kind of way to phrase it, that we offer through the Choice Program, which is our program that we use as for alternative learning, not for, just for students who struggle. There's a wide range, it's for all students. And there are a number of alternative credit options offered through that program. It could be, you know, who knows where learning, learn everywhere will end up going, but it could certainly down the road be available for that, if there was outside learning opportunities for, you know, experience-based activities that we designated as appropriate to, to earn high school credit.
Would that be similar to the way we're incorporating phys ed, gym classes?
Yes.
Or ballet? If you take ballet, you get so much credit for it.
Yes, I don't know, we would, it's concerning, I guess it's the same idea.
Like bowling.
Yeah, it would be a similar idea, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, this does encompass the situations where we're allowing other classes to substitute as well?
Can you give me an example?
Well, I shouldn't say classes, other activities, though. I, I didn't, I thought, I knew this had to do with the classes.
Mm-hmm.
Like VLAX and stuff, but I didn't know that this was the one that was also allowing sports activities to, does this govern sports activities replacing?
Yeah, I don't see that, I don't really see the sports activities as a.
Replacing PE.
Alternative credit. I guess it kind of is, but I don't really see that as, I never viewed that as falling under this policy, so.
Okay.
Okay. What does control that allowance of letting athletics substitute for PE credits?
It's in our program of studies as such that we have that offering, and it's been approved by, by all of you.
Okay.
It's part of the procedures, but it's.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I just.
Yeah, it's by, it's your decision, you, you decided.
I didn't think this policy governed that, I was just confused.
No.
What's the, there was, on the first page, there was, looks like blue added and then re.
So, the reason I made it blue, just trying to be tricky, is showing you that we moved it. So, it's the same language, just moved into a different place, because it made more sense.
Where is it now?
Up top.
So, that, this is the same.
So, the crossed out blue is the same as the blue up there.
Got it.
So, we just, that's why it's all in blue.
Okay.
Because I'm so good at this, creating the tracking thing, such a skill of mine. So, caught it?
Yep.
Are there any other comments or questions on this?
Is there more, do you view there to be more work to be done on this?
Depending on the outcome of the instructional practices, certainly. We just really wanted to get to the, meet the legal requirements and make it current with what the actual practice is in existence.
Having it approved first reading only makes no changes to existing policy, though.
Nope, it doesn't.
So, do you need to have something?
Not right now.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no, there's no urgency, just, we need to do it, and we, this one's been tricky, we've been talking about this one for a long time. So, I wouldn't want to see it approved on the first read anyways, I want feedback, just in case there's something that we might have missed.
Actually, I'm looking at it now, seeing that we did take out the academic review committee completely, and I think we need to make sure we put that back in. So, in some capacity, just so that Rick, or any principal, has an opportunity, if there's an appeal, and I, I don't, I think it took out the language completely, appeals for situations falling outside the rules. I don't, I cross that off completely, and I don't think that should be crossed off completely. I think that needs to stay in there, so.
Comprise the academic review committee?
It's typically an administrator, not always me, but you, typically not me, but I can, I can do it, but it's usually not me, because it's someone appealing the, the decision. So, it'll be like, say, one of the assistant principals, a school counselor, usually there to advocate in behalf of the student, and usually a department head or two, so relatively small.
It's not defined, but it's there.
No student representation on it, direct?
No.
Okay.
It's, I think there's two, there's some privacy stuff there.
Privacy.
I just, I was, it wasn't, it was clearly.
Any other comments? Okay, so, can we make a, take a vote for first reading? Did you have a comment?
No, I didn't, just leave it down. I have to call him.
Yes, I have to call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, that sticks out, great. The next, and I'm not going to go through each one of these individually, extended learning opportunities are the same changes. These are very intertwined, these, these committees that we have had extended, have had extensive conversation about what extended learning opportunities are and we are continuing to talk about those in instructional practices, so there will be further conversation. But again, we have a maximum in here and we can't have that. So, yes, sorry, yes, please, permission.
I move to approve policy IHBH, Extended Learning Opportunities for First Reading as distributed.
Great, second, Beth, second, thank you. Is there any discussion or comments on this, anything that you're concerned about?
Is it?
Melanie.
Again, I have a question on content. So along the lines of the civic engagement, is like boy state, girl state, is that included in this area when we talk about community?
Yeah, I'm not.
Internships, community service.
I'm not as, I'm, I'm aware of those programs, I don't know all the details of them, but it's, extended learning opportunities are pretty wide open. I mean, you can make a case for a lot of different opportunities, so.
What have we traditionally used this policy to oversee?
So, for example, we've had students undertake internships like at the local animal hospital. We've had someone go to the dentist's office and do some pretty good work there as a kind of an internship in that capacity, shadowing dentists.
So internships, externships, things like that, is there?
Yep.
And if the student can, they complete an application.
There's a process.
Petition.
Right, so if they've done something or plan on doing something that falls into a category, it goes to, you know, the Rick and this.
I think another distinction to point out is rather than just a, an experience or an opportunity, it's, it would be an opportunity that would, we're looking for approval for credit purposes and that's the conversation with the principal, whether or not it, it meets certain competencies and can be granted credit.
Yeah, it's not typically used to replace like a math course or something like that. It's in addition to, it typically falls under elective pieces, yeah.
Does, I can't see it if it does. Does this policy state how credit will be determined? It just says they will receive credit.
Graduating credit shall be based on student's demonstration of course competence.
When we have done it in the past, Rick gets a formal proposal from the student and that proposal in it contains what they're looking to replace. So we had, I can think of one example that Amy brought forth for students where they, they were getting a half credit in science because they were a LNA at one of the local assisted living facilities. And from what they needed for the job requirements for their LNA, I don't know if it was a test or license that they were taking, it met the requirements that we needed for the, the half credit science, so.
Correct.
It's kind of a case by case and Rick does a, I'll say a deep dive and then make a recommendation to me and, you know, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, it's kind of.
Right.
I'm going to approve it with him, we just run it by each other, so we're, we're well aware.
So, yeah, it's not traditionally core courses, but there are times where it can be and it's been incredibly useful and valuable for, for those folks.
And the language in here says that you consult with the department chair, students meet with their counselor, they review the request, context of their academic plan and graduation requirements, so they have to demonstrate course competencies. So there's some meat in there, but it gives.
Yeah.
The department chair, the principal, the counselors, opportunities to really discourage something that they didn't think would really fit, but also encourage those things that do.
Am I reading it correctly that, that the actual approval only requires the principal? It does not require you?
No.
It does, it requires just me.
And what, in your mind, what differentiates an extended learning opportunity from a, an alternative credit?
I guess in the purest sense that, for me, it's not always, but it's, the extended learning opportunity is that kind of externship type of thing that's not offered in our core curriculum. It doesn't mean it always goes that way, there is some overlap.
So alter, so an alternative credit is more likely to be a, a like-kind substitution, whereas this is likely to be something.
Beyond, yeah.
Experience.
Stretch.
And I would also say that an extended learning opportunity is a type of alternative credit.
Right.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Yes.
It's just, so we're being more specific.
Second page of what?
The alternative credit option.
Yeah, if you go to the alternative credit options.
There's a bulleted section on the second page.
Oh, yeah, got it, okay. I was looking at the second page of the second policy.
So are we ready to vote on first reading?
Sure.
All those in favor? Five, six, there's six of us now. Okay, great, and then finally, want to bring this one to the floor, please?
Sure, I move that we, move to approve policy IMBA, online slash internet-based education for first reading as presented.
Great, second by Beth, terrific. So again, this is one of the examples of an alternative credit option. And again, we were removing the, the maximums and doing some work with, making sure that sometimes kids, especially at certain levels, will take a course that they may not receive credit for, so they might take a course in the middle school that they're not going to receive high school credit for, but it would act as a prerequisite to an advanced course. But we want to make sure that that's covered in this, so that they can do that. And same, same process, the process is very similar. And we removed a bit of language at the very end because it didn't really make sense as to why it was in there about violating the policy and engaging in the activity that the school authorized considered inappropriate. We believe that might have been kind of an internet safety language piece that is covered in our internet safety.
AUP.
Whatever, is that what it is? Thank you.
I think so.
Is that the policy?
The acceptable use policy, yeah.
Right, right, so. Yes, sometimes the initials throw me, so.
Yeah.
Are there any comments or questions on this? Anything, any feedback? Yes?
The changes that have been made on the previous two and on this one, does that remove all barriers from a student petitioning to get all of their credits outside the school?
Well, it has to be yes and no, I mean, I still have to approve it.
Would you, and would you have defensible grounds for not approving it categorically?
So I would just say that the easiest answer to that question is on IMBA, just for calculating at EDM, what constitutes a student? And so when a student falls below the sixth credit requirement, then that changes the way we report to the state. So there, we have to have a process to take a look at those examples for a couple of reasons. Number one, for state reporting, but number two, what does that student's plan look like if they're taking X number of courses online, V-Lax, whatever the case may be, in extended learning opportunity? And sit down and not just approve it, but also approve it with a graduation plan in mind? Like, how are we going to get you to the endpoint if it's a non-traditional trajectory?
Are we going to have to address another policy, the one that talks about graduation requirements, where we talk about what you need to do to get an HP diploma?
We've certainly had conversations.
We've had conversations about it, but.
At this point, we're trying to just clean these three policies up, but that certainly is a topic for the Policy Committee.
I'm just wondering if it's, if it's pushing to, what?
And the sixth credit piece.
Because of that policy, will you be able to say you will not meet the requirements to get an HP diploma?
No, I think that developing that plan is having that HP diploma in mind. But let's say we had a student go to a different public high school for three and a half years, they move into our community and it's February of their senior year, assuming they meet all the requirements through transfer credits, they're going to walk out with an HP diploma, just the same as if that student's best friend took all their classes through V-Lax and arrived to us in January of their senior year. So as long as you can check the boxes of our HP requirements.
Yep, there's been kids that have come in and just needed one class.
Right.
I'm, I just wanted to understand.
Yep.
And I think there is an alternative learning plan policy and we're probably taking a look at that in the Policy Committee, but we didn't want to, yeah, it's, it's, it's been a snowball of, you know, it's, as, as you know, with policy work, it's just one interillion policy. So on.
Painting a bridge.
What?
It's painting a bridge.
Exactly, is there any other comments? Okay, can we call the vote? All those in favor? Three, six, oh, great, awesome. At this point, we are finished with our public session. Is there anything that we need to go into non-public for?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Which ones?
It would be under reputation and compensation.
So are these?
Yep.
I just, are we ready at that point to do it?
Just need to process a service report.
Oh, you want to do a report of the process before we do that? Okay, sometimes we do it the other way, so, go ahead.
We started off very quickly and we continued all the way through. The most discussion was on the class size, but it wasn't as long as typical class size discussions have gone in the past. And we finished a half an hour early for.
So far.
So far. Great, thank you, Cindy, okay, so.
I move that we enter non-public under RSA 91 dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, Section A, compensation and/or Section C, reputation.
Second by Krista, move by Tom, and I need a roll call vote.
Cindy, aye.
Krista, aye.
Holly, aye.
Tom, aye.
Beth, aye.
Melanie, aye.
So will we be dismissing them?
Yeah, we don't need to come out.
Okay, great.
Non-public at eight oh three.
Eight oh three, non-public, awesome. Thank you, Melanie.
Well, I just, I actually.
We're not done?
Oh, there we go.
As long as we can get there. I'm going to rat out big story.
Like, so you'll see a gap, it's an explainable gap, so that means.
You lost it for fifteen minutes?
Hey, Rick, I thought I did, I, I put it in my calendar, I thought it was something that it said in essence.
Yeah, I guess that happened.
I will be there tomorrow.
Okay, great.
You will or not?
Oh, my God.
I just came back today from Florida.